Okay, we'll be back in session. And I'd like to bring back the last item just to confirm that we will be moving forward with a revision of the ordinance and Mr. Levin?
Yeah, based on our discussion, it appears that the way to resolve or to address the issues that the council by consensus agreed with, it would appear that if we modified Chapter 26, Section 3, Point 13, and that would be paragraph L.2, which currently reads, "Watercraft may be stored on a lift or davits or in the water," I would suggest that we insert the words so that it reads as follows: "Watercraft may be stored wardward of a seawall on a lift or davits or in the water."
Perfect.
That's very good.
That would be very, very good.
What do we do with all the ones that are?
Well, they're currently in violation. I mean, that's the way I think the code is clearly interpreted, and this way it's just clarified even more.
Okay.
So, how big of an impact is this going to have? Do we have a sense, is this going to affect 100 people or 500 people? Do we have any way of knowing?
Because we don't actual, the things that are waterside, we either see by accident or from across the canal or because somebody reported it or, you know, an officer's been called into somebody else's backyard to look at something. I would have to check with canal maintenance to find out how many that they actually know that are sitting up in the, you know, rear yard.
And I wouldn't want us to be going around and policing every backyard to determine whether there is a watercraft such as this sitting on the property or if there's a cradle. I would hope we would not do that. However, any new activity or if there is something that looks significantly bad, I would like for that to be addressed. Rachel?
And when they got their permit, there was space enough for them to hang their boat on the waterside of the seawall. I mean, so really clarifying isn't changing anything. I don't feel like it is because, I mean, if they were, you know, if they didn't have any space to hang that jet ski, would we have given them a permit to have that davit there? Hopefully not.
I wouldn't think so.
Well, certainly if, you're right, if there wasn't space or if when they submitted their application for the permit, they showed their intention was to store it on the land, we would have said, "You can't do that."
Right.
Okay, so as we go forward then, all right? Thank you.
I'm good.
Appreciate that. All right, we are now up to recommendations from city officers.
We also have on the next agenda the long-range financial plan. We'll be bringing that to you.
Should we bring snacks to that next meeting?
Definitely don't ask.
I did my day today.
Go ahead.
That's all you have? Okay. Our city attorney.
Yeah, it's good to be back. I appreciate the patience of the city council and staff. I'm not 100% back yet, but I'm getting there, so thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. City clerk?
Yes, we have an item regarding board member term limits. This was discussed by the code enforcement board. It was actually brought forward by one of the members of the board. They subsequently included this as an agenda item so that they could make a formal, have a formal discussion and make a formal recommendation, which they did at their November meeting. And they are recommending an ordinance amendment that would allow the code enforcement board members to serve an additional two, three-year terms after their initial three-year term. And I did a list on the cover sheet, those boards, those other advisory boards, which do have the additional two-year terms after the initial term, and it is a majority of the other boards, so this would make that, it would make the code enforcement board terms consistent with the other boards of the city if you would wish to do so.
I'm okay with that.
So the other boards can go for three-year terms on reappointment?
It would be, they have a total of three-year.
Any problems? Any concerns about that?
I don't.
This would require an ordinance amendment, so.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I would like to see all of our boards have perhaps less time and more turnover only to allow more citizens to be involved, but since we already have this in place, I don't know, maybe our city attorney in terms of other cities, I mean, is this a usual kind of, do you know?
No, you know, our experience with our code enforcement board's been very good. And I don't know, in my term as city attorney, I've never seen any comments from the city council adverse to the activities of code enforcement.
Well, I don't mean it specifically.
I understand because it's the hidden agenda. If the city council feels that the code enforcement board is getting too uppity, they would then want more turnover and, or even many jurisdictions have gotten rid of code enforcement boards for that reason, but the working relationship between the city council and our code enforcement board's been very good. And the only reason why this is coming forward is there was a discrepancy between the manner of reappointments of our board versus the other boards, and I really, I don't know of any reason why that was created, and it may just be an oversight or something.
Yeah, and I had nothing against the current code enforcement.
No, I know.
I'm just in terms of philosophy, in terms of, and I know in the past it's probably been very difficult to get people involved, but we seem to have more people now wanting to be involved, so that was my question.
Our code enforcement board is a large board, so there is an opportunity for people to get, you know, come on to the board if they want, so.
Okay. So if there is no, anything else, Rachel?
I just think, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but in order to be consistent, if it's somewhat helpful, but if there was somebody that was going the wrong way, we thought on the code enforcement board, it would at least give us an opportunity, but like you said, there's no real history to that, so.
But this particular ordinance allows it to happen, correct?
The ordinance, the way the ordinance is written is that they will serve one additional term after their initial term, so they would serve a maximum of two, three-year terms. This would change that.
But each term has to be reappointed.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And that's true with every board.
There is that opportunities for any of our boards.
Correct.
That's true.
Or we could say for an additional three-year term, and then that could be a total of six if, instead of two, instead of four after the three, we could do another three instead of three, six, nine, right?
That's actually the way it's written. So regardless of whether they serve an initial three-year term or they fill in an expired term, which could be, you know, just a few months, right now they can only be reappointed by city council for one additional three-year term. So they could serve anywhere between, you know, three months to three years and then serve another three years for a total of six years. They're asking for it to be changed so that they can serve the initial term, whatever length of term that is, plus an additional two, three-year term. So it would be the six additional plus the initial, whatever length of time that is.
I don't have a problem with that. I would think, again, consistency among our appointed committees would be, would be okay. Again, we have the opportunity for other people to, again, be appointed in between those times, so I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either.
Are we okay? So we have an ordinance change then on that?
We will. Thank you.
Okay, and then under vacancies, we have two vacancies for alternate members on the Historic Preservation Advisory Board. Those are continuing vacancies. And we have one vacancy as an alternate on the Board of Zoning Appeals. We have no nominations. Under appointments, we have two seats on the Ponte Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee. We have six eligible applicants. Voting forms are being distributed. You'll be voting for two.
And the appointees are Mr. Thompson and Mr. Thomas.
of Zoning Appeals. We have two eligible applicants. Voting forms are being distributed.
Do you know Karen?
Is it Wally?
Wally.
Wally, okay. Congratulations, and I want to thank also all of those individuals who put their names in nomination. We really do appreciate it, and don't stop now. Keep submitting, because we have a number of committees, again, that do need individuals to participate. We now move into our policy and legislation. I have a couple of items, one in which I want to bring up to our council members. I've gotten a couple of calls, and perhaps you have too, with regards to people coming over the bridge by Gulfview on Marion Avenue, you know, coming up, going west on Marion Avenue, coming over that bridge at speeds in which it's difficult for people to get out because the people coming over the bridge don't see them, they don't see the people coming over the bridge. And it's been recommended that there be a speed cushion. We've not, I believe, we and previous councils have kind of stayed away from the speed cushions. Is there anything that we would like to do? Do we want to ask our police department to review that area? You know, what do you think that you would recommend, if anything?
I haven't received any calls. How many people, several or two or?
Well, it's been, I think, a couple who have said they put together a petition, but I haven't seen specific names on that petition yet.
I'm leery of speed cushions.
I mean, maybe have the police put the speed thing up.
We have done, yeah, we've done some studies on that. We've had police out there, we've had our city engineer do some analysis. It's the people who live on Gulfview coming out as you come over the bridge. This has been brought up before. We can certainly bring it up again.
Just, again, just in terms of a safety issue, I.
We should take a look at it again.
I think just, again, taking a look at it so that we can hopefully, again, help those individuals that may be trying to get out of Gulfview. It's only one street, and again, as I've come over that bridge, I rarely see anyone coming out of Gulfview, so.
Do you want it on an agenda? Because we don't have to do any more additional studies. We've done it all. Do you want to put us on an agenda?
Is the speed cushion going on Marion?
Yes.
It would go on Marion.
So we're gonna, I mean, everybody that comes up, goes that way on Marion's gonna have to go over the speed cushion when there's, like you just said, only a few cars coming out of that street. I, I don't feel comfortable with it. I mean.
Is that an "ah"? I'm there as well. I don't want to see.
Okay, okay, we'll move on then. We will move on. I do want to, again, congratulate Captain Jason.
Caccini.
Caccini, I'm sorry, I didn't want to mispronounce it, Caccini, who graduated from the 258th session of the Federal Bureau of Investigations National Academy in December. This is probably the highest quality enforcement executive training program in the country. We have much to be proud of. He's graduated, was held in the academy in Quantico, Virginia, so we're very, very pleased and proud of him for doing that. Also Detective Bonnie Sils, again, is attending the Florida's International Crimes Against Children Task Force, their regional conference. And again, having someone there to, again, be up to speed is very helpful and grateful about that. This past two days, yesterday I was at Governor Scott's inaugural celebration, not really any celebration, but at the swearing-in. They didn't invite me to their parties. I can understand, but I did have an opportunity to meet with our lobbyists, and they definitely toured me around the Capitol, meeting an awful lot of people. I did meet Commissioner Putnam, who is the new Commissioner of Agriculture and Consumer Services. Again, very pleasant, very supportive of Ponte Gorda. Did meet with our representative Ken Roberson, and again, talk with him about our RO project, and he, along with others that I talked with, are feeling very positive about future discussions with the Water Authority. I did happen to meet Diane Salz, S-A-L-Z, who is the lobbyist for the Water Authority, and she too is, you know, interested in helping to move further and further along with Swift Mud. So we're gonna talk with our staff about how we, again, proceed. I think Jerry Paul and his staff at Capital Access know an awful lot of people. They're in their faces all the time, and it's apparent that they're in their faces all the time because everybody knows them and perhaps run away from them. No, they don't run away from them, but also the mention there with, boy, I had an awesome opportunity to meet with Representative Ben Albritton, who is the Chairman for Agriculture Natural Resources Appropriations Subcommittee. He was very, very supportive of us and is still supportive of us with our RO plant. He will be talking, I believe, with Carlos Beruf, who, as you know, has been on and is on the Swift Mud Board, and he'll be meeting with him this coming week. So again, he's hopeful that things can be resolved there, so that was good news. I've met Representative Matt Caldwell, who is now Chairman of the State Affairs Committee, and he too has been very, very supportive of our plant. It seems that people know our project, know, understand its importance, and so I'm just hopeful that, along with their understanding its importance, that somebody follows along with it.
Good.
So all in all, I was not able to touch base with Senator Ben Aquisto. She was chairing meetings, and again, everybody seemed to be all over the place during this inauguration time. But I did meet just briefly with her chief legislative assistant, Matthew Hunter, and again, he's, again, understands that we're kind of keeping plugged in in terms of our activities there. So all in all, it was cold in Tallahassee. Very pleased to be back here in Ponte Gorda, and I guess it's gonna be going down to freezing numbers tomorrow, so. But the swearing-in was very nice, a lot of pomp and circumstance, which was lovely. I didn't get a seat, so we stood through the whole thing.
Oh, boy.
So, but anyway, it was, it was very nice.
Thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you for going and representing.
But we have, I believe we have a very good team with Jerry and Rob and Jamie, and they do know people, so, and they do get our message out. So I think we should be very pleased with our legislative and our lobbying team.
Great.
I think that's all I have.
Great. I just want to share with all of you, over the holidays, I've met so many people, I mean, living downtown, and I'm always out and about, and new people in town who love Ponte Gorda, and people who are looking for homes and wanting to move here. There's several people staying out of Fisherman's Village. They love our bike paths, and they love our paths, and they love our clean, clean city. Everyone mentioned that, so. And I want to wish everyone a healthy and happy new year.
Tom?
Yes, thank you. I read something in a paper this morning that was distressing to me, and it was about a bicyclist being hit by a car, a young kid on the way to school. And it says here, "The county has averaged one student-related vehicular incident every 18 school days since September." That's a lot to me. That is really troubling, and I'm wondering if we can't have our police department step up our bicycle law and safety program to get out there and try and engage more people on the importance of bicycle laws and safety.
Yes.
That intersection, that Mackenzie light, I don't know what it is about it. I've, you know, the police know, Tom and Butch, they all know. I was hit there. I've seen, I was there yesterday morning when I saw the kid's bike and his shoe in the middle of the road, and I was very concerned, which luckily he was wearing a helmet and, you know, things turned out okay. I believe the person did run the red light. I've seen a guy hit off of his motorcycle, and this was like the third car back. I don't, there's something about the lights, there's something about people just not seeing it, and I don't know if it's in the morning, but, you know, that, even where I live, my daughter would have to walk to Sally Jones. There's no school bus. So any two-mile, you know, two-mile radius, the kids have to walk or ride their bike, and that is, that crossing right there is a major issue for kids and pedestrians and even cars. I don't know if we can get, you know, public safety to talk to the school board. I mean, maybe they could have a crossing guard there in the morning. I don't know what the solution is, but it's scary. I mean, just a month ago, I sent Butch and Tom an email, and one day I saw two people blow, blow right through that light. I mean, I just, I couldn't even comprehend it, so it's definitely a dicey situation. Luckily, it's close to the public safety complex, so they're out there right away, but still, we don't want that.
We need to do more on this issue. We really need to get the public more informed on bicycle safety and step up to the plate here.
I like your idea, though, Rachel, about a crossing guard.
Yeah, I do, too.
I mean, that, isn't that would be the responsibility of the school board or the school itself?
I mean, I think they would probably say, I'm just talking off the cuff here, that it's a signaled intersection, so it's safe, but it's not. You know, they would say, "Well, there's a crossing there, and there's a, you know, the whole system is in place," but it's an accident-prone intersection. And I'm sure that discussion has taken place before. Maybe we need to rekindle it somewhat, using this as a good example.
I like what you're saying, Tom, also. I mean, I love the idea of a crossing guard, but I think more education is needed. I mean, we do have an older population, and even when we put up the bicycle on the lane, you know, on Olympia, I can't tell you how many people have said to me, "What is that? What is that for? And does that mean that's just a bike?" You know, I mean, I really do think we need.
We need to step it up.
Yes. How can we do that?
And again, I know that the sun has a limited distribution. However, perhaps having a picture of a street, you know, with our bicycle sign and doing, again, kind of an education piece about what the rules of the road are for both bicycles as well as drivers. We came home last night in the dark, and there was someone riding a bicycle with no light. I mean, they were in our lane.
With no clothes, exactly.
And we hardly saw them.
I see that a lot, a lot.
Especially at night, you know? I mean, that's, that was very dangerous.
No reflective clothing and no light, no light on their bike. I see it all the time, every day, not just all the time, every day.
Maybe we need a bicycle police.
We have a bicycle patrol. We can ask the shift that's on at night, that if they see bicycles out there without lights, just stop them and inform them. You don't have to ticket them right off the bat, just inform them.
They, yeah. Or if they have problems affording a light, something that we can do.
Well, we do. We have, we give out lights.
Okay, so something that we can do then to.
Give them a ticket and a light.
A warning and a light, whatever, but that, I think, would be, would be helpful to, again, helping our community. Thank you, Tom.
Nancy, you're probably watching this, or you will watch it.
No, she can't watch it.
Well, when it's on.
Oh, when it's on.
Happy New Year and hoping you'll feel better soon.
Yeah. Rachel?
Yes, one thing I had sent to you, I believe, last Friday, at the Southwest Florida League of Cities, I was approached by Mick Denham, who you would know as the fertilizer ordinance man. He's a council member from Sanibel, and they've written a white paper, Lee County Kaluza Hachi Watershed Regional Water Management Issues, and basically all of the municipalities in Lee County and Lee County government have all endorsed this, and what they're trying to do is come up with comprehensive solutions to solve their problems. And all they ask is that I bring it back and possibly ask for a letter of support saying, you know, "As part of the Southwest Florida League of Cities, we support, you know, the adoption of the recommendations of..."
I believe that that would be.
Do we need a motion? Not a motion, just consensus?
I think consensus. Yes.
Yes, consensus.
We'll spare a letter.
Yes.
Thank you.
And the other thing I want to say is that Ajax is making it look easy, man. They are, they are like grinding and paving, and the streets look great, everybody's taking notice. I mean, we had a couple of complaints when they first did Marion and Olympia, like, "Oh, poor timing," but now I think that everybody sees that it's a quicker process than what we've been through before. They're okay with it, and it looks really good.
Looks good.
It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes.
Before you go to citizens' comments, I would like to thank city council for recommending that, since none of you wanted to do it, I sit on the Restore Act Committee. The first meeting is today from 1:00 to 5:00, and we meet every Wednesday for the next two months from 1:00 to 5:00. Thank you very much.
But you will take our issues forward in terms of funding for Ponte Gorda.
Oh, God.
We know now you won't.
That was a good call.
So I guess you're not available to meet with this afternoon.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You will not have too much on our agendas then, if you have to be there at 1:00 on a Wednesday.
Every Wednesday, wonderful.
Wow.
Thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We certainly all appreciate.
I'll remind you.
More than you know.
I hope with all that time spent, there's some benefit.
Is this just with county, or is this going to be?
No, this is the county.
This is with county, okay. Well, hopefully the person who's chairing it will move the agenda along.
That's correct.
So you may want to be the chair.
No.
But thank you. Thank you for doing that. We are open now for citizens' comments.
Guess who? Ray Rose, citizen of Ponte Gorda. Three real quick things. One, the other night, my wife and I were up in Port Charlotte, and we saw bikers with no lights, and I was listening to her. After 55 years, I occasionally do that, and her suggestion was, is with all the programs we have down here, it really might be good to have a program where the flashing red lights for bicycles were available to people that can't afford them, because we think some of those people were either homeless or something like that, and it would make a big difference. And we also, coming over the bridge, there was a person with no lights. The other thing is, is there's a lot of bikers that don't observe stop signs and swing out. That's one. Two, over the past few weeks or so, I've been at events where EMS was called, 9/11, uniformly, people were so impressed with the reaction and the team response between the county, the fire, and the police department, and how well they worked. Some of the people from out of town said, "I wish we had that up north." Last item, to your Christmas city, Kim. In the past couple of weeks, I've had occasion to drive all the way from Alaco up almost to Northport. I couldn't believe it, there were no holiday lights along that entire stretch of 41. In Ponte Gorda, our lights look so fantastic on Olympia and on Marion, but to my recollection, we don't have any on 41 North and South, particularly between the bridge and Olympia in both directions, and that's where most of the traffic is, and I think it would be a wise investment for us to put lights in those areas, which draws the attention, and then they're gonna notice the lights on the other areas, and you did a great job in selecting the new decorations. Thank you.
Hi, Jean Polaski, a citizen. Just informative to the past county and so forth, last year I brought to Chief Arnold and Tom Lewis. and Tom Lewis the idea of giving out lights for the bicycles at night with a warning ticket, and they have implemented that. They had discretionary funds that they have used, we worked with them in getting that to come across. You'll notice a lot more lights on bicycles now than you did last year, just as the number of people riding bikes has quadrupled in the last seven, eight years in town here. So, things are being done. What we can do, though, is to support the chief with that by additional funds. They give out a warning ticket when they give out the light. It's, it's in the squad cars at night, for that officer to make a stop, give a warning ticket, and then say, "If we catch you the next time," this is a formal thing, "you get the regular ticket." Okay? So, that's the way it's working.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Good morning, Steve Fabian. Talking about the storage room at the garage, you know, there are no, there are no windows in this room either. You're talking about your five-foot seawall, you know, when you drive through the park and you see people with their lawn chairs down there, they're not looking out in the park, they're looking out on the water. So, your idea of putting benches facing the other way, I think, is a good one. The last item, I noticed in the paper this morning, the county is, is revisiting their impact fees, and I think maybe the city ought to think about doing the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? I, I guess I just want to mention one thing that I did forget to say earlier, over the holidays, our son and daughter-in-law were here, and we decided to go for a bike ride. And so, we used the yellow bike, since four of us were, were going together, and we had a delightful time. The bikes are getting a little bit tired, and so I understood from Sue at Lashley that they were gonna be looking, I guess, talking with Team Pontagorda about perhaps changing them out for new ones, or at least going to the donors who provided the bikes in the beginning, to pony up for a new bike, but it was, they're, it's a lovely, lovely opportunity, we thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed our ride, so, but I want to say again, thank you to Team Pontagorda, thank you to Jean for helping to bring that all about, that's been a wonderful, wonderful asset to our city. Thank you. Anything else for the good of the... All right, then, our meeting is adjourned.